All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries seven to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 18th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries seven to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held September 15th, 2015 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and September 22nd, 2015 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report and Dr. Stark.
The 2015-16 school year is less than a month old, and yet we have many items of good news to share with you this evening. Congratulations to our four National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, Bethel Park High School seniors Emily Augustine, Jack Brownfield, Sean McLean, and Akil Rajasikar, who were named four of the 16,000 semifinalists in the 2016 National Merit Scholarship Competition. They earned this distinction by being among the top scorers in the country on the PSAT, which they took last year as juniors. They are now eligible to continue on in this program to receive one of the 7,600 National Merit Scholarships that will be awarded in the spring. Good luck to Emily, Jack, Sean, and Akil. I can also share that we have an additional four students who will be named commended students in this program for being among the top 34,000 scorers on the PSAT. But the National Merit Scholarship Corporation won't publicly release their names until the end of the month, so stay tuned. This year, 29 Bethel Park High School students will be participating in a six or seven-month half-day or day-long apprenticeship program sponsored by the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. These students will be able to gain some hands-on experience working with local professionals who are willing to share their experience, their expertise, and their enthusiasm for what they do for a living. These students will not only get a behind-the-scenes picture of potential careers of interest, but they will also make valuable connections with organizations and people who can help them as they pursue their career choices. Congratulations to our successful applicants. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School senior Haley Hannan, who earned second place this summer competing at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America's National Competition in Washington DC in the Focus on Children event. Haley wrote a children's book called What Makes Me Special that was illustrated by Bethel Park High School sophomore Christopher Futrell. Haley originally created the book as part of her work in the Child Development Program at the high school, and she has generously donated a copy of her award-winning book to the Bethel Park Public Library. Bethel Park High School senior Macy McKittrick was one of 14 American high school students who were chosen as ambassadors to travel to Russia this past summer as part of the National Security Language Initiative for Youth's Russian Language and Culture Program, which is a full scholarship program in conjunction with the United States Department of State, the Russian-American Foundation, and the internationally renowned Moscow State Academy of Choreography. Macy was part of a group of academically high-achieving students from 10 states who spent six weeks in Moscow, where they studied Russian language, history, art, and culture, and attended a wide range of professional visits with leading international companies and individuals representing a diverse span of industries. Congratulations Macy. The outdoor courtyard at Bethel Park High School is a more beautiful place thanks to the efforts of high school theater teacher Christopher Nagel, who worked with a group of students to create a beautiful water feature similar to the pond area he created at Building Four of the old high school. Living in the pond are three eastern box turtles, who recently had their pictures taken for the yearbook. Bethel Park High School is one of two schools in Pennsylvania that is licensed to have an eastern box turtle. Thank you to Mr. Nagel and everyone who helped to create this beautiful habitat that will also provide learning experiences for our students. Eighth grade technology education students in Todd Richards Room at Independence Middle School had fun taking the marshmallow challenge. In this challenge, students were given 20 pieces of uncooked spaghetti, three feet of twine, three feet of masking tape, and one marshmallow. They were given 18 minutes to work together to build a tower as high as possible out of the spaghetti that would support a marshmallow on top. The students had fun constructing their towers, and they quickly found out that they needed to rethink their approach a couple of times in order to build a successful tower. This was the second exercise the students were doing as part of their introduction to construction unit. The first exercise they worked on challenged them to work together to build a tower with newspaper. Both the marshmallow challenge and the newspaper exercise helped to prepare the students for their bridge-building project, where they will learn how to design their bridge on the computer and eventually construct their bridge using balsa wood. The marshmallow challenge helped the students to better learn how to experiment and communicate with one another, as well as to understand the universal systems model of problem solving, which includes input, process, output, and feedback. The 117 students on Independence Middle School's Team 8A are committed to keeping their school litter-free by participating in Keep Pennsylvania's Beautiful Litter-Free School Zone Project. Students recently spent one hour working in small groups to clean the grounds around IMS, the high school, and the administration building, including the surrounding parking lots, access roads, and athletic fields. Students worked in small groups with one student keeping a tally on a clipboard of what was picked up in the 15 trash bags that they filled during the outing. The top five items collected were 609 cigarette butts, 368 snack wrappers, 237 pieces of paper, 227 plastic bags, and 124 bottles. We thank the students for their commitment to keep their school litter-free. Neil Armstrong Middle School fifth graders in Madeline Tiscus art classes created their own digital modern masterpieces using Chromebooks and an online art program called Pick Monkey. But before they began creating, they looked at 15 famous works of art and analyzed how the artists used the elements of art in their masterpieces. They also discussed the humor in art as well. Some of the works included Da Vinci's Mona Lisa, Wood's American Gothic, Munch's The Scream, and Warhol's Marilyn Monroe. Once the students selected a favorite masterpiece, they used the Pick Monkey program to alter the classics by overlaying text, adding filters, and creating icons. The students enjoyed participating in this project so much that many created more than one modern masterpiece during their art classes. Speaking of Chromebooks, Year Two of the district's Chromebook initiative is moving forward, with Independence Middle School students for the second time receiving their take-home Chromebooks before the beginning of the school year. Bethel Park High School students are gearing up to receive their take-home Chromebooks on September 28th. While students in grades three through six are in their second school year of classroom Chromebooks, district first and second graders are excited to be able to now log on to Chromebooks that are on carts in their buildings. Jill Schall's second graders at Memorial recently logged on to create their accounts, and then they immediately got to work reviewing their weekly spelling words using the online program Spelling City. It is great to see that our staff have embraced the exciting learning and enrichment possibilities that the Chromebooks offer because our students are anxious to use that technology. Franklin fourth graders in Catherine Mucci's classroom recently used their Chromebooks to learn addition properties and subtraction rules in one of their math classes, including the commutative, associative, and identity properties. This particular lesson was co-taught with Mrs. Mucci by student Emilia Silman, who created her own Google Slides presentation to help explain the math concepts. Emilia did a fantastic job. Eventually, all of Mrs. Mucci's students will have a chance to co-teach a lesson with her this school year. William Penn Elementary School was transformed into the William Penn Medical Center, and Lori Joseph's first-grade classroom was the surgical center, as the students donned surgical masks and rubber gloves to perform surgery on two words in order to make a contraction. Students were given cards with two words on them, such as what and is, and the students had to surgically cut the eye off is and reattach the two words with Scotch tape, and then use a Band-Aid to draw an apostrophe to form the contraction what's. While their parents were recovering from this, while their patients were recovering from the surgery, the students had to tell what two words they used to make the contraction, and then they had to use the newly contracted word in a sentence. The students really enjoyed participating in this hands-on learning experience. One student shared that this was her first and greatest surgery ever. Bethel Park Assistant Director of Special Education Sharon Smith recently completed the 2014-15 Pennsylvania Fellowship Program for Special Education Leaders, sponsored by the Pennsylvania Department of Education's Pennsylvania Training and Technical Assistance Network. To participate in the program, Mrs. Smith was required to participate in monthly skill building sessions that focus on the practical application of current special education issues, and complete a culminating project that was uniquely designed to meet the instructional needs of the Bethel Park School District. For her project, Mrs. Smith chose to focus on the district's secondary transition program. It was an honor for Mrs. Smith to be selected to participate in this program, and the district is pleased that she will be able to bring all this knowledge back to Bethel Park to enhance our already outstanding special education department. Congratulations and thank you to Mrs. Smith. Abraham Lincoln Elementary School librarian Denise Pazekanix has established a partnership with the Bethel Park Public Library and WQED-TV to focus on community outreach, so be on the lookout for the WQED traveling tent that will be set up at various Bethel Park events and locations to offer activities that will engage children in the joy of learning with an emphasis on reading, writing, media literacy, and technology. Participating families will be eligible to receive free giveaways and information materials about the library. Keep your eyes open for the tent at an event near you and stop in for the fun. Thank you to Mrs. Pazekanix for helping to establish this meaningful partnership that promotes literacy among our students and their families. You have until Friday, October 30th, to submit a nomination for the Bethel Park Grade Alumni Hall of Fame. The Bethel Park Grade Alumni Hall of Fame was created in 2013 to recognize and honor Bethel Park High School alumni who have demonstrated outstanding accomplishments either personally or professionally after graduating from Bethel Park High School. Honorees are selected because they either significantly improved the lives of others, contributed significant volunteer or community service, or achieved significant advancement in their professional field. This year's nominees will be inducted on Friday, January 22nd. Nomination forums are available on the Bethel Park High School Alumni webpage. Thank you for taking the time to tell us about our worthy alumni, and we know there are many of them out there. And that concludes my report for this evening. We look forward to sharing more good news throughout the year.
Thank you. As always, it's always fun to start with that good, all that good news. Student Government.
Hi, I'm JD Measures, and I'm the junior school board rep. And recently, in SGA, we had a spirit assembly this past Friday run by Will Dunn, and it's really increased our student involvement and all the excitement for this week because it's homecoming week. And along with that, we are working very hard to get prepared for the tailgate and the parade that we have on Friday, and the dance itself on Saturday at 7:30. And that's all for now.
Great. Thank you. PTA/PTO Council.
I'm Brandon Hoffman, PTA President at Memorial Elementary. The school's been busy. It's only 20 academic days so far, but I have a lot to, a lot to report. So we'll start with Ben Franklin. They were thrilled with the way the school year has started. Membership in the PTO is up from last year, and for the first time, they offered a buyout program, which many of the parents favored that option as opposed to the fundraising. So I think the other schools will follow suit in years to come. There was also a drastic increase in the number of parents that attended the first PTA meeting and the PTO, sorry, PTO meeting, and the PTO is looking at this as a good sign for participation in the years ahead. For the first time at Franklin, they hosted a spirit wear sale, and the families were extremely happy with all the items that they had to offer. And they kicked off their hero program. All the students are excited to collect hero bucks when they're recognized for doing positive behavior or certain actions throughout the school year. George Washington had a Bethel Park gear sale as well that ran from September 1st through September 18th. Their Kid Stuff coupon book sale ran from September 4th to September 18th. They had their first PTO meeting on September 1st. On September 11th, the PTO sponsored an assembly called the Ned Show. The Ned Show is a character education program that centered around three important messages that have lifelong relevance: never give up, encourage others, and do your best. Washington will be practicing these messages throughout the year. Last week was their open house at Washington. Parents met the teachers, saw their children's classrooms, and stopped by at the bake sale and BP gear sale in the cafeteria. They raised almost $400, which will go towards field trips at the end of the year. George Washington Elementary went gold. It's capitalized, it's initiative of some sort, on Friday, September 18th to raise awareness of childhood cancer. All students and staff were asked to wear gold for the day. Many students and staff also participated in the inaugural Joey Fabus Superhero 5K Run this past Sunday, and to show their continued support, they offered a $25 gift card to Toys R Us for the first student that crossed the finish line. On October 2nd will be their family bingo night at 7:00 PM in the school cafeteria. The Fall Fundraiser will begin also on October 2nd and run until the 16th, and their Scholastic Book Fair begins October 5th and runs until October 9th. Abraham Lincoln. This year's Welcome Back Picnic at Abraham Lincoln was a huge success. Special thank you to all the students who volunteered, as well as the Abraham Lincoln PTO Board members and their families who helped put it all together. The BP Hawk made an appearance and posed for pictures with the students. Several local businesses also helped make this event successful, including Kona Ice, Brewster's, and Chick-fil-A, all supplying food and treats. Bethel Park Shop &amp; Save and Cassidy Village Giant Eagle provided gift cards to purchase other food and picnic supplies, and Colonial Beer Distribution donated ice needed to keep beverages cool. And Bethel Baseball Association lent the Hot Dogs Grill for them to cook out. It was a night filled with fun, food, and friends. They also had the kindergarten teddy bear picnic, which was cuddly and furry success. Casey Elphinstone and Kate Thomas organized a wonderful time for Abraham Lincoln kindergarteners, the students, and their families. They had some rain, but it didn't dampen the spirits of the students, and Mrs. Corella and Mrs. Ferris read stories and welcomed Lincoln's new kindergarteners. Lincoln's Open House was held on Thursday, August 27th. Teachers did an outstanding job welcoming parents and their children who enjoyed scavenger hunts and tours of classrooms. Additionally, the annual PTO bake sale took place in the gymnasium and was a yummy success, thanks to Julie Timmons and all the volunteers who organized and baked. Stephanie Lindblom planned a celebrity teacher scooping night at Brewster's Ice Cream on September 16th. Abraham Lincoln teacher celebrities included Mrs. Dowd, Mrs. Liberto, Mrs. Nath, Mrs. Paz, and Principal Johnson. Everyone enjoyed an extra scoop of fun while helping Abraham Lincoln PTO. The first Abraham Lincoln PTO meeting of the school year took place on Thursday, September 3rd. The Lincoln Board was very excited to start the year off with filling committees with all the different parent volunteers. Additionally, many events were discussed, especially the Lincoln Fall Festival, which will be held on Friday, October 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. There will be foods, game, food games, and a lot of fun planned for this event. William Penn Countdown to Kindergarten was held on August 13th. This is about two weeks before the school year starts. All new incoming kindergarteners and their parents enjoyed a packed lunch where they were able to socialize with each other and had the opportunity to get to know one another. The kids broke up into three groups that rotated between touring their classroom and being read a book by kindergarten teacher Mrs. Sappis. The kids played on the playground with Mr. Lenoski and made paper chains to count down the 11 days that were left until school started. It was a fun afternoon that ended with the kids getting Goldfish crackers and a William Penn t-shirt. Their PTO had a Welcome Back snack attack for their teachers on Room Preparation Day. Snacks included fruit, granola bars, pretzels, Cheez-Its, popcorn, and chocolates, all like in grab-size containers that they can grab and go. New this year, William Penn PTO hosted a Welcome Back picnic on Sunday, August 23rd at Village Green Park. The PTO supplied chicken, paper products, and beverages, while families were asked to bring side dishes and desserts. There was a large turnout, and the families loved getting together to socialize before school started. On Friday, August 28th, William Penn held their first Spirit Day, where students wore their black and orange to show their Bethel Park pride. PTO kicked off the Character Trait Education Program this year by asking all students to wear a special color that coordinates with the trait of the month. This month's traits is kindness, and the corresponding color is purple. They wore purple on Friday, September 4th, to show their respect. We will be asking students to participate for the first Friday of every month, different color, different character trait. William Penn PTO is also doing the Kid Stuff Fundraiser, it's finishing up this week, and they're having their second annual rummage sale on Saturday, October 3rd, from 8:00 AM till noon in the bottom parking lot of William Penn. They're accepting donations on Friday, the night before, on October 2nd, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Help spread the word by telling your friends and family so have a fun and profitable fundraiser. Last for William Penn is they had their first PTA meeting on September 21st and had a meet and greet before the meeting started. The PTO served popcorn and beverages, there was a large turnout, and they got to know a few new parents. And the last school is Memorial, I saved them for last. Memorial, we provided a delicious Welcome Back breakfast for the teachers and staff on one of their in-service days before school started. Many families and teachers attended our ice cream social on August 27th. We had Kona Ice and Sugar &amp; Spice come, and they provided the different treats. We also had an open house bake sale, and we brought in over $600 from the bake sale, which again goes towards field trips and different events we provide throughout the year. Right now, we're in the middle of a two-week fundraiser, we're doing Kid Stuff as well, and also Yankee Candle, which usually is our most successful fundraiser. Last year, I introduced the Amazon Smell Program, one of the moms discovered this. You basically go on Amazon, you click on their donation tab, and you associate your school with it, and just through online purchases, we've been getting checks mailed to us every month. And they started small, like at $1.50, $2, but I've been blasting through the emails and advertising on the PTO website, and the money's growing. It's free money. I mean, you're buying this stuff anyway, so I think it's a great opportunity for all the schools to participate. It's free to sign up, it's really easy. And last thing we have going on is we're right in the middle of our Spirit Week. Today, they were wearing their teacher favorite colors, and tomorrow's going to be Patriotic Day, followed up by Black and Orange, and then Picture Day. And just last thing I just added was clearances were a hot topic, and I just wanted to thank the admin and everyone else, the teachers, Mrs. Rose, your secretary. I know they spent countless hours, and I've heard from my school that it's been pretty smooth for, I mean, what we had to do, but I was worried over the summer it would affect a lot of our volunteers, but we have pretty much the same pool of parents helping, so I just wanted to thank you guys for everything. I know it was a lot of hard work to deal with, so thank you.
Thank you. Gosh, great to hear all of the activities that continue, and we thank you so much for all that you do for our students.
Just to let the board know, we're up to over 600 registered volunteers in the school district, and that's just amazing. We thank all of the parents and community members who commit that time to our schools. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate each and every one, and we appreciate all that Mary Beth, our secretary, did to get that, all those clearances for everyone too, in a timely fashion. Great. Solicitor's report.
Madam President, I circulated a copy of the Solicitor Report to the National Board Members' Card.
Great, thank you. We didn't have any committee reports.
No, but I think we should note that on October 13th, 7:00 PM, we will have a Curriculum Committee meeting in this room.
Right.
And we're not going to meet prior to that, so we'll get that out.
Yeah, October 13th, good. Any public comments on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into business items, Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Dobus, will you take that for me this evening, please?
Sure. There are four items under the Curriculum Committee. Would anyone like any of those items held out? Seeing none, I'd like to move approval of the Curricula, Science 9 honors, the revision to the 2015-2015 school calendar, professional development, and the school-sponsored overnight educational activities.
Thank you. Items 1 through 4 under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Dobus and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? I would just like to thank whoever put together the answers to my questions on giving us the total costs or total estimated costs. I appreciate that. Maybe if we can keep that going in that kind of vein for, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much. All in favor of items 1 through 4 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those items carry 7 to 0. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are six items under Personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out? If not, I move item 1, Approval of Substitutes; 2, Approval of Extra-Duty Responsibility Program; 3, Acceptance of Resignation; 4, Change of Assignment; 5, Appointment of Personnel; and 6, Approval of Administration, Tuition, and Reimbursement.
Thank you. Items 1 through 6 under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Under 5A1, we have a position listed as Temporary Professional-Permanent. Is it temporary or permanent? I don't understand it.
Appointment of Personnel, item 1, Temporary Professional-Permanent.
Okay. Temporary Professional refers to the certification that this is a permanent position. So a temporary certificate is for someone who has not yet earned their tenure rights and earned the credits that they need, F48 credits and continuing education credits in order to be considered a permanent certified teacher.
Okay, thank you. That's what I got in trouble for asking Cindy last time.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those motions carry 7 to 0. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spicuzzo.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Seeing three items this evening under Facility and Services, would anyone like any of the items held out separately? Hearing none, I move the following three items: item number 1, Contract with Fire Protection Services; item number 2, Hiring of Architect; and item number 3, Field Windscreens.
Second.
Items 1 through 3 under Facilities and Services have been moved by Mr. Spicuzzo and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those items carry 7 to 0. Finance Committee and Mr. Spicuzzo, will you continue with that one?
Absolutely, thank you. Under Finance Committee this evening, I see five items. Would anyone like any of the items held out separately? Hearing none, I move the following five items: item number 1, August and September 2015 Salaries and Bills; item number 2, July 2015 Financial Report; item number 3, August 2015 Financial Report; item number 4, Approval of the Purchase of Cafeteria Tables for the Independence Middle School; and item number 5, Fuel Contract with the AIU.
Second.
Items 1 through 5 under Finance Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicuzzo and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those items carry 7 to 0. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
There are three items under the Policy Committee. Would anybody like any of them withheld? Seeing none, I move that number 1, A Policy of Approval of Policy, first of three readings. Do I have to go through the whole list on these?
No, I think we can just...
Okay. Number 2, Policy Revision, first of three readings; and number 3, Deletion of Policy, first of three readings.
And we don't, we're not really moving them, we're just doing the first of three readings.
Just an announcement.
Thank you, just an announcement, correct. And all of those policies are on our website, or will be tomorrow. Thanks.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Would you like to address the large number, particularly under number 2?
Yes, we have a number of policies that Pennsylvania School Board Association, who provides policy guidance to us, has recommended updates to regarding more recent legislation. So a number of these changes are routine in nature, and the policies that will be posted will indicate the changes that are necessary.
So they are mostly minor tweaks, then?
Minor tweaks based on legislation.
Thank you.
For clarity.
Okay, thank you.
And other, Mrs. Rule, will you take other for me, please?
Okay, this is for PSBA Officer Elections. I move that the Bethel Park School Directors cast their vote for the following officers at the Pennsylvania School Boards Association: President-elect Mr. Miller, Vice President, Mr. Schwartz, and Eastern Region at Large, Mr. Melnick.
Second.
Thank you. Item 1 under Other has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on this item? And again, as a board, we are only allowed to submit one vote as a board as a whole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries 7 to 0. Public comments, anything that you wish to address the board about this evening? Seeing none, I'll move into Board Comments, and Mr. Christiansen, I think I'm starting down at your end tonight.
Oh, I get to go first.
If you wish to make comments, you don't have to.
Yeah, no, I will. This evening, I met Matt Howard down at Washington Elementary and walked through, and yeah, we've got, we've got updates over the course of the last few meetings, but it really did come together nicely. It's a great environment down there.
Great. Yes, I agree. Mr. Shugel.
No comments today, Mr. Cook. Thank you.
Mrs. Rule.
I have a few. For the, under the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, just to let you know that they still have a few outstanding schools that haven't paid their bills from last year for the special education services they received, but of course, with the state budget not having passed, sadly, some of those schools may still have a hold on their services because they're unable to pay last year's bills. So the budget is in a critical situation right now, and so are some of our schools. Under Steel Center, you've heard me talk about the meat cutting class and how we really moved to save that class for another year, and fortunately, this year, we've got 19 students enrolled. It doubled in number, so that was great, because we have so many companies that are asking for meat cutters, and they can't get them. So we were able to spare it, and it has increased twofold, which is great. And another news with the Steel Center School, that they had their first regional meeting for the Southwestern, all the VOTEC schools came together so that they could enjoy a day of professional development and information exchanging, so they're following the pattern of our general public schools. So that's a good thing. And we have 728 students enrolled in Steel Center this year, so it is up to. And the last thing for here at Bethel, just want to say that the DECA Club and FCLA were in full gear, ready to start our special projects, and we will be having the tree display again this year, and the students have asked us to double the number of trees. They now want to include the sports clubs, so please come up and view the trees. They choose the theme, they decorate the trees, and then they will be putting the "Might Forbid," so you will get a fully decorated themed tree. And they really did a lot of work last year, so this year will be interesting to see, but they want like at least 25 trees. And they'll be on display the first two weeks of December.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Rose.
Yes, the parents at Neil Armstrong should have received a phone message from Mrs. Flo to this evening regarding a water line break in the Neil Armstrong campus. As a result, there will not be a student day for the Neil Armstrong students only tomorrow. School is canceled for Neil Armstrong only on Wednesday, September 23rd. I also wanted to comment on the program Rachel's Challenge that was presented today to grades 5 through 8 and grade 11 today to promote a culture of kindness in our schools. Rachel Scott, for whom the program was named, was a student who died at Columbine High School, and the program, which was based on the legacy of Rachel Scott and the writings that she left behind, challenged our students to promote a culture of kindness in our schools, to dream big, set goals, and to support one another and their community. Parents and community members were also invited to a separate presentation at 7:00 PM this evening. We wanted to extend a special thank you to the Bethel Park Community Foundation for a grant that helped to fund the program. We are most grateful. Thank you.
Thanks, great. Mr. Spicuzza.
Yes, you can see me sitting up there, trying to hide. Couple, just a couple quick comments. Another great staff report on all of the wonderful things our students are doing. It's really good to see and hear, and I can see better on this screen than I can on that screen. And the PTA, PTA, whatever you, names they are, it's a great report. I appreciate the humor, too. It's always nice to keep it upbeat and fun, and it sounds like the schools are off to a really great start. Thank you for what you do.
Mr. Means.
Well, I guess the big news in education right now is the state budget or the lack thereof. And it's my understanding the legislature is trying to pass a stopgap budget to pass on to the governor on items that they agree on, and hopefully, he'll pass that and we can get the money flowing again.
Mrs. Dobis.
To second what Mr. Spicuzza was saying, I think it sounds like it was a wonderful beginning for the new year, from all the positive reports from the staff and the students and the PTO. I think it seemed to me as if it were exemplified by that idea of the hero bucks. It sounds like there are heroes with lots of positive character traits throughout Bethel Park right now in the school district, and a lot of hero bucks get, be given out, should be given out.
Sounds good. I wanted to comment on that outdoor courtyard pond area. Mrs. Rose and I, when we took our tour, got to meet with Mr. Nagel and have him show us, actually, they even have tomato plants growing in there and the turtles, and I mean, I thank him and all those involved because it is a just, if you haven't seen it, it's just a gorgeous addition to the high school, and quite frankly, a lot of what I envisioned as we were doing some of this, and you know, students and people saying, oh, you're taking away the outdoor aspect, but I mean, my gosh, this is even better than any of the outdoor aspect that we had at that, at that building when we had the open campus. It's just beautiful. I would also, following what Mr. Means said, encourage you as taxpayers, as residents, as potentially as parents, to email your legislators regarding this budget at the state level. It is, oh my gosh, we, we sit here as volunteers in this position. We're elected by you, but we are paid nothing to be on your school board, but all these other folks are all paid with our tax dollars to do, to do a job for us at the state level, and they are shirking, shirking their duties big time, I'm sorry to say, but this is going beyond, I mean, there are so many who are being harmed by the fact that we have no budget. We were pointed out tonight, I mean, some programs that are in desperate shape at this point, people, programs that are going out to try to get loans to function, and you know, and these are children's lives and education that we're talking about, and I say shame on them. When I read they took a hiatus till September 28th or something like that, how the heck can they do that? I think they should be locked in a room, but anyway, if you could just email them. They say they're strengthened numbers, if we would just all, you know, kind of voice, you know, a quick email to say, please do something. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.